Good evening. Welcome to the January 11, 2023, meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I'm Devanchi Patel, Chair of the Planning Commission. Tonight, the Commission will consider the following: items related to the Arlington Junction Park, five-year review of the Arlington County's comprehensive plan, the commercial resiliency, excuse me, Commercial Market Resiliency Zoning Ordinance Amendment, and PC business, including PC Committee reports and other business approval of the December 5, 12, and 15, December 22 of 2022 meeting minutes and other current matters. I'd like to share a few logistical points for those members or commissioners participating remotely. We have one commissioner who is participating remotely tonight. Tonight's meeting is available at a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon Thios Channels 39 and 40, and the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference and keep your cameras off until the clerk calls on you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you've spoken, please turn off your cameras. If you are dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. Speakers will have two minutes to comment as individuals and three minutes to speak if representing an organization. The speaking timer will be displayed on the screen by the clerk. If you're dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning when 30 seconds are remaining. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Madam Clerk, may we call our first, oh, actually, yeah, may we call our first item?
Our first item are several items to facilitate improvements to the Arlington Junction Park located at South Ead Street and Army Navy Drive, including GLPA 22-0004, GP 355-21-1, amendment to the general land use plan map from High Office Apartment Hotel to public for a new park bounded by Army Navy Drive, 12th Street South and South Ead Street, rezoning 22-00003, a rezoning from CO mixed-use district, CO 2.5 mixed-use district, and CO CC mixed-use Crystal City district to PS, Public Service District bounded by Army Navy Drive, 12th Street South and South Ead Street, part of RPC number 35-003-437. Ordinance to abandon a portion of South Ead Street as a public street, subject to a reservation of an easement for existing public and private utilities, such portion of the street dedicated to the county in deed book 271, page 326, containing 12,076 square feet, running north to south between Army Navy Drive and 12th Street South, and located between Eastern 17th and One Half foot portion of South Ead Street and parcel F Pentagon Industrial Center, RPC number 35-003-437, adjacent to a previously vacated portion of South Ead Street, and property known as Land Unit B, 411th Street South condominium, RPC number 35-001-028, with conditions, and ordinance to vacate a portion of South Ead Street, subject to a reservation of an easement for existing public and private utilities, such portion containing 4,404 square feet, running north to south between Army Navy Drive and 11th Street South, located adjacent to a previously vacated portion of South Ead Street with conditions, and we have a staff presentation.
Do I say something? I need, I...
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Anika Choudhary, Associate Planner with Arlington's Planning Division, and I am joining, I am joined tonight by staff from the Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development, the Department of Environmental Services, as well as the Department of Parks and Recreation. This, this item is for the adoption of a number of elements to facilitate the creation of a new park that was acquired by the county for the proposed Arlington Junction Park. Staff will be presenting two presentations tonight for the following: a GLUP amendment, or General Land Use Plan Amendment, and rezoning request for a new park presented by CPHD Planning, as well as a request to the associated ordinances to abandon a portion of South Ead Street as a public street, and to vacate a portion of South Ead Street presented by DES Real Estate. The first request is to consider the adoption of the General Land Use Amendment, General Land Use Plan Amendment from High Office Apartment Hotel to public for a new park located at the northwestern corner of the area bounded by Army Navy Drive, 12th Street South, and South Ead Street, as shown. As you may recall, the request to advertise for this GLUP amendment was considered by the Planning Commission and approved by the County Board in November. In addition to the proposed GLUP amendment and associated rezoning is requested from CO, CO 2.5, and CO Crystal City to PS, as shown here. The proposed park site is located at South Ead Street and Army Navy Drive, is within the Richmond Highway Planning Corridor, and surrounded by recently completed and approved commercial and residential development, including the Alter, the Sage, and the anticipated Penn Place development. The approximately 0.7 acre park area, which has been updated from approximately 0.9 acres in the report, was formerly known as the Teardrop Parcel and part of parcel 1D of the Pentagon City PDSP, later known as the Penn Place Site. The timeline of the proposed GLUP amendment and associated rezoning is shown here. One component to highlight is that the County Board approved their request to advertise for this GLUP amendment for a proposed park in November, and that is why we are here tonight for final consideration. Should the subject request be approved tonight and at the County Board's January meeting later this month, DPR's planning, design, and construction of the park improvements is anticipated this summer. As discussed in November, this is a proposed GLUP amendment request from High Office Apartment Hotel to public to align the GLUP with the intended park use and previously adopted plans and policies. As previously mentioned, the proposed rezoning request is from CO, CO 2.5, and CO Crystal City to PS. While most Arlington parks are zoned S3A, the PS zoning district allows for park uses and has been designated at several other Arlington park locations, including the Long Bridge Park and Jeanne Dean Park, to facilitate the approved park master plans. The existing CO, CO 2.5, and CO Crystal City districts allow for parks via use permit, and a rezoning is requested to facilitate construction of this park as a by right use consistent with the proposed public GLUP designation. In this instance, the less restrictive setback requirements of the PS district would allow for pylon lights, an integral design feature specified in the approved master plan, to be placed in their optimal locations, whereas the current standards of the S3A district would not. Based on current zoning regulations, a rezoning to the PS district is being considered, partly due to the proposed location of lighting and associated setback requirements. In addition, given the past transfer of development rights for this site in 2013 with the approval of Pentagon City PDSP amendment for the Penn Place Site, there is limited development rights available, and also a restrictive covenant limiting uses to recreation, uses, open space, and public access. Therefore, while it is less common to rezone to PS, it has been done previously, and in this case, we anticipate the long-term use of the land will be public open space. In addition to the GLUP amendment and rezoning, DES and DPR both have concurrent requests that will, that will be brought forward later this month for County Board action, which include a re-subdivision, an abandonment of Rite of Way, a dedication of Rite of Way, and park easements, as well as the park naming as the proposed Arlington Junction Park. These subject approvals will facilitate the final steps needed to advance to construction, including the review of construction plans and issuance of permits. Park design permitting and the construction contracting process is anticipated to follow shortly after County Board consideration of these concurrent requests. A delay to accommodate a zoning ordinance amendment would adversely impact the construction timeline of the proposed park. A potential zoning study of the public zoning districts, including the S3A zoning district, has been a recognized need for several years, and there will be additional consideration of the Planning Division's work plan and zoning study in the coming Therefore, given the current lack of ability for S3A to support this park design, as well as the previously stated reasons why PS is appropriate for a park in this location, and the limited available density and restrictive covenant limiting the use of the site to recreation, open space, and public access, staff concludes that the PS district deemed to be the most appropriate zoning district for the proposed site. And with no issues, staff recommends that the County Board adopt the proposed GLUP amendment and rezoning for a new park. Thank you. I will now defer to real estate to present the abandonment and vacation requests.
Hi, I'm Betsy Herbst with DES Real Estate Bureau, and I'll just take a brief moment here to tell you about the abandonment and vacation of portions of South Ead Street to facilitate the construction of the proposed Arlington Junction Park. Once these portions are abandoned, we can create, through the re-subdivision process, two parcels, one for the park and one for the constructed South Ead Street. And as part of that process, we will also dedicate a 30-foot street and utilities easement for the section of 11th Street that connects to South Eads. By way of history, this old section, the original section, was dedicated in 1927, originally as Pearson Street. In the 60s and 70s, South Eads intersection with Army Navy Drive was realigned to the current location that, that we know South Ead Street to be now. In 2015, the Alter project was built, and another, the original section of South Ead Street was vacated. The portions to be abandoned were, and vacated are no longer, and perhaps never were, shown on the master transportation plan, since it goes, they were originally dedicated so long ago. There are existing utilities within the street, but we will provide for a reservation of those utilities for any existing utilities which remain in place for the park project. The street easement to be dedicated for the 11th Street will formalize its use as it is already shown on the MTP as a commercial local street. This diagram here shows the two sections of South Ead Street that one, the smaller section will be vacated, the larger will be abandoned. And this next slide shows how we will use that area to create the two new parcels, parcel F1 and F2, one for the park, one for the street. And it also shows with dash lines in the center, the connection of 11th Street to South Ead Street. Finally, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission find that the abandonment of the orig, of the 12,076 square foot portion and an additional vacation of 4,404 square feet of original South Ead Street are substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan or applicable portion thereof. Thank you.
Thank you. Any applicant?
No applicant, and there are no public speakers.
Thank you. So the matter is with the commission. Any commission reports? No. Anybody want to take the lead on identifying areas of, of interest for our discussion tonight? Commissioner Schroll, maybe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, this came before us last month, and, you know, we passed the motion at that time, and the discussion, and I think the concern raised by myself and Commissioner Hughes was about the rezoning. You know, Ms. Choudhary walked through that, but, you know, that, that was the concern at that time by the commission. We passed a resolution unanimously recommending a study. Ms. Choudhary walked through that. So I don't know, aside from that, what else there would be to discuss this evening. The vacations are pretty straightforward. So, yeah, I wouldn't recommend anything else necessarily at this time.
Are there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Schroll, can I turn to you for a motion? Or anyone else that may have it?
Well, so, Madam Chair, I think you might put me in the awkward position of making a motion if I'm going to vote against it, so...
Yeah, that's fine. Let me get the language together for, Commissioner Peterson, can I call on you to make the motion? And Commissioner Weir is joining us virtually. Commissioner Weir, did you have any questions or comments?
Thank you for asking. I did not.
Thank you.
There'll be a total of, you'll do to the county manager's recommendation, there'll be four actions that will go on here. So the first one will be a GLUP change to establish the designation as green on our wonderful map. The second one will be a rezoning. The third one will be a abandonment on the public streets, and then the fourth one will be a vacation of the actions. And the, the last two are found on the next part of the staff report. Yeah, the findings are for the, we'll make sure that we word it correctly.
I would like to propose a recommendation that the Planning Commission recommends to the County Board to adopt the attached resolution to amend the general land use plan to change the land use designation of a 0.9 acre lot located at the northwestern corner of the area bounded by Army Navy, Navy Drive, 12th Street South, and the South Ead Street from High Office Apartment Hotel to public for the proposed new park, Arlington Junction Park Attachment A.
Any second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Fantastic. Let's do our roll call. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Patel, aye, the, the motion carries. Seven to nothing. I added one ashmark. Okay, so is there another motion, Commissioner Peterson?
Yes, I would like to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend to the County Board...
Commissioner Peterson, I'm going to suggest I move. It's important. It's, I move is, is the leading.
Okay.
Can I, can I interrupt? Just, I think there's eight votes. You mentioned seven. I think there's eight of us.
Tell me. Yeah, that's right, eight of us, sorry. Excuse me. Thank you for that, Commissioner Sarley.
I move the Planning Commission recommend to the County Board. Okay. Okay, thank you. I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the County Board to adopt the attached ordinance to rezone property bounded by Army Navy Drive, 12th Street South, and South Ead Street, part of RPC number 35-003-437, from CO mixed-use district, CO 2.5 mixed-use district, and CO CC mixed-use Crystal City district to PS, Public Service District Attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comment? Commissioner Hughes?
I defer to Commissioner Schroll.
Commissioner Schroll?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I would, before voting on this, that I would just restate my opposition to using PS instead of S3A. I'm supportive of the project otherwise, so I'm just voting against this portion, but just want to make sure that's on the record. I understand the rationale from, from staff that it's used elsewhere. In this commissioner's estimation, maybe we shouldn't be using it elsewhere, and also, we're doing it because we haven't adjusted S3A, and I do hope that it gets into the staff work plan soon, because it's been there for, I don't know, five years, something like that now. So, something that is certainly needed.
Commissioner Hughes?
I just would reiterate all of what Commissioner Schroll said and associate myself, and just continue to impress upon staff that the, the longer we continue the approach, the disparity of the approach will continue to, to show through, because this is now, as I said this last time, the third park and Jenny Dean, Virginia, Jenny Dean, Long Bridge, and now the Teardrop Parcel all share the same thing in common. So, we've got to fix this issue. We know it's an issue, and our community has changed dramatically in the past five years, as, as shown through our approaches to many other things. So we can do this. It's not a lift too hard.
Any additional comment? Commissioner Peterson?
I just wanted to thank my colleagues for bringing up these very important points. I think the principle is great. I strongly support you in, in your, how you will vote. I just wanted to say that having worked on several SPRCs in this neighborhood, I really feel like we need extra parks in South Arlington and in Crystal City. So, that's why I'm going to be supporting it. But I agree with your principle, and I hope that I can continue your work to get this changed made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment, discussion? Fantastic. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Hughes?
No.
Schroll?
No.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Patel, aye. Vote is six to two. The motion carries. Is there a third motion, Commissioner Peterson? Do we have the language?
Pardon me, just trying to figure out the, the motion.
No, that's fine. Do we have the language up for the finding that? Is it on the staff? It's not? Does staff have the finding language? Okay. We can get it shared on our screen.
Okay.
I think we're going to get it on our screens if that...
Okay.
There we go. Okay.
Okay. I have a motion, Madam Chair?
Okay, please, thank you.
I move that the PC find that the proposed abandonment of a 12,076 square foot portion of South Ead Street and an additional vacation of a 4,404 square foot portion of South Ead Street are substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan or applicable part thereof. The street abandonment and vacation of the respective portions... Discard that last couple of words.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just a reminder to my colleagues, Madam Chair, that as Commissioner Schroll and Commissioner Peterson did a great job, that this is one of those things we actually have to do under state code for a finding. So just, it's, it's important to remember that in the vacations and abandonments, it's a finding, and very important.
Any other discussion? Okay, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Patel, aye. Eight votes, none of the motion carries. Is there another motion? We're in? Okay, that's it? Okay, fantastic. So that matter is resolved. Madam Clerk, can we call this second matter? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation today.
The second item is acceptance of the five-year review of Arlington County's comprehensive plan, Phase 1, per the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2230, including the general land use plan, the master transportation plan, the stormwater master plan, the water distribution master plan, the sanitary sewer system master plan, the recycling program implementation plan, the Chesapeake Bay preservation plan, the public spaces master plan, the historic preservation master plan, the affordable housing master plan, and the community energy plan. And we have a staff presentation and one public speaker later.
Thank you. And who is presenting on behalf of staff?
We have a presentation from Margaret Rhodes.
Okay.
Who is joining us virtually.
And just for, a reminder for our colleagues that this is a, this is looking backwards and not looking forwards. Ms. Rhodes, are you ready?
Yes. Good evening. Can you see the PowerPoint presentation?
We can. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My name is Margaret Rhodes, and I'm with the Planning Division, and I will briefly walk us through the five-year review. The Code of Virginia requires an adopted comprehensive plan for each locality, and it also requires that the local planning commission, as the keeper of the comprehensive plan, review the comprehensive plan on a regular basis. The purpose of the comprehensive plan is to guide the coordinated and harmonious development of the county through the provision of high standards of public services and facilities. In Arlington, the 11 comprehensive plan elements are reviewed and amended on a continuing basis. That is, our comprehensive plan is always current, as we amend and/or add elements as needed, with each going to the planning commission and the county board. The planning commission and the county board also regularly receive a summary report, which identifies amendments and updates from the past five or more years, and identifies areas where further amendments may be appropriate during the next review cycle. The 2025 year review covers the timeframe from July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2022, and includes a technical report, which identifies the amendments and updates that have occurred during this timeframe. It also includes an updated essential guide with some administrative updates, and a compilation of the general land use plan and master transportation amendments that have occurred during this timeframe. Major amendments and adoptions during the last review period have included an update to the community energy plan, a reprint and biannual updates to the general land use plan, the adoption of the bicycle element of the master transportation plan, the update of the transit element, and an amendment to the streets element. The public spaces master plan was adopted in 2019, and it has three sub-elements, including the urban forest master plan, the public art master plan, which was updated recently in 2021, and the natural resource management plan. Major upcoming amendments and adoptions for the next review cycle include the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan, the Forestry and Natural Resources Master Plan, the sanitary sewer master plan, the historic preservation master plan, and the solid waste management plan. To provide you a little bit more information on the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan, pending planning commission and county board review this coming year, the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan will be adopted as the 12th element of Arlington County's comprehensive plan. It will replace the urban forestry plan and the natural resources manage plan, energy plan, which was, as we just saw, are currently sub-elements of the public spaces master plan. Similarly, for a little bit more information on some upcoming general land use plan updates, there will be some changes coming forward related to the missing middle housing study work, and they are proposed to be added to the comprehensive plan through a GLUP amendment. And changes supporting the new vision that's being developed for Langston Boulevard will also be added to the comprehensive plan through an upcoming GLUP amendment. In terms of the major amendments and updates that will be, we know will be coming forward, these will be, a lot of these will be identified in an upcoming process. So this related process, which will be a comprehensive plan review, and kind of a second phase to the work that we're doing here, will evaluate how our comprehensive plan articulates our strategies to steward and implement the county's vision. And this process will consider if amendments to the comprehensive plan are needed to address some of the plans and objectives that were originally adopted back in 1960, to see how, you know, if changes are needed to better communicate how Arlington manages growth and change relative to 21st century needs and priorities. And also to make sure that we are incorporating some of the new, our new priorities, such as racial equity, public health, and economic resilience. And there will be community engagement opportunities for us to work with you, the planning commission, and the community to develop these priority areas for future comprehensive plan, and supporting document updates and amendments. In terms of the final recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission accept the 2025 year review of Arlington County's comprehensive plan, including the technical report and the updated essential guide to Arlington County's comprehensive plan, and continue to review the comprehensive plan on an ongoing basis during the next review cycle. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, may we call the public commenter?
We have one public commenter tonight, and it's going to be Bernard Byrne, joining us virtually.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Byrne.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a request to amend the general land use plan GLUP before the next five-year review of the comprehensive plan. As you've been told, the county, the staff will be beginning this review soon, but this is a first, think of an update, so staff can work on it now. The county needs to amend the GLUP to assure that the development of, the redevelopment of properties containing multiple family dwellings do not result in displacement of the pace buildings tenants. Redevelopment of properties by site plan projects often increases the height and densities of the building beyond that prohibited by right in the properties, in the property zoning district. Redevelopment usually displaces some or all of the building's tenants. This is not desirable. Displacement causes hardships to tenants, especially those who have low day budget incomes, have handicaps, or are elderly. Displaced tenants often have difficulty finding suitable housing nearby at reasonable costs. Moving services can be costly. Residents may also need to pay, purchase new carpet and furniture that will fit into new apartments. They can also be displaced yet again. This can happen repeatedly. Thirty years, as an example, 30 years ago, I was displaced from multiple family dwelling, the building in an RC zoning district by redevelopment project whose site plan permitted increased the building heights and densities beyond that permitted by right. I then relocated to another multifamily building in the RC district. That building was within an area near Collins Springs Road, and that the Boston Sector Plan designates for neighborhood preservation, presently living in that apartment. However, developer has recently submitted a conceptual site plan amendment that resulted in increase in heightened density that is beyond that permitted by right in RC district. If the county board approves the 4.1 submission containing a similar site plan, the developer will demolish the building in which I live. The project will displace all of the county buildings residents, including those with low incomes, are elderly, or are handicapped. The project will displace me for a second time if it is approved. Please therefore initiate a process that will amend the GLUP in a manner that will permit tenants to age in place within the apartments in which they live. Any desires to increase the county's housing supply should not result in displacement of those that already live there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So there are, given that there are no more public speakers, the matter's with the commission, are there any questions or comments? None? Okay, Commissioner Scholl, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board accept the 2025 year review of the Arlington County Comprehensive Plan, including the technical report and the updated essential guide to Arlington County's Comprehensive Plan, Essential Guide, and continue to review the comprehensive plan on an ongoing basis during the next review cycle.
Any second?
Second.
Thank you. A second, Commissioner Hughes? Thank you. Any-
I just want to note that Daniel Weir has his hand raised.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Weir, thank you, Ms. Barton.
Yeah, so, motion is made and seconded, and I intend to vote for it, but before we lose the opportunity, I want to ask staff whether there's an opportunity here, or whether it would be in a different project to take up the substance of Mr. Byrne's comment and request. Thank you.
Yes, so amendments going forward to the general land use plan and our other comprehensive plan elements will be the subject of this associated and upcoming review that we will be bringing to the planning commission to discuss in terms of scoping, et cetera, later in 2023.
Okay, thank you very much. I, it's, it is, it's substantively, it's, I think it's really strong feedback that I think that a lot of commissioners are going to be interested in, and so I'm looking forward to having that conversation. Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes?
Commissioner Weir, and for my colleagues, you know, this issue is something that does actually address within our comprehensive plan elements within the AHMP, the Affordable Housing Master Plan. It is a continual and recurring issue that this commission continues to face with no real good solutions out there. So it is something that we should continue to explore and amend, and I do know that staff is working on a revision to the Affordable Housing Master Plan in the upcoming years, so that will be an opportunity to further increase or change our past approach, to the best of our knowledge. So I want to just make that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Hughes?
Separate. I always remind you, and since I'm leaving, I'll use this one chance to continue to plug, so hopefully the message can continue to percolate for years when I don't show up. We have to remember, and this is one of those examples, that we are one county in the big Commonwealth. And the reason that we have this five-year review is because there are places in the Commonwealth. The same rule that applies to Wise County, to Patrick County, to Northumberland County, to Henrico, and Fairfax also applies to Arlington. And so we do this review every five years, and it's important to remember that some people don't touch their master plan in those five years at all, and are doing this to make sure that they look at it and consider their plan. We do a continual basis, the staff has clearly laid out, but it's just one of those things to remind yourself, when you're looking at challenges and approaches, sometimes we forget to open our eyes and think broader. And remember that the laws of Patrick, Wise, Henrico, Northumberland are the same ones we too have to fall under, so it's just a great reminder of that. So I just pass it along to my colleagues, so that I can continue. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Okay, wonderful. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
The motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk, may we call the next item?
The next item is ZOA-2023-01, FPC 27, and NFPC 15, and ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance, Articles 7, 8, 11, 12, and 18, Sections 3 and 4 of Appendix A, Columbia Pike Special Revitalization District Form Base Code, and Part 9 of Appendix B, Columbia Pike Neighborhood Special Revitalization District Form Base Code of the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance, to generally define and permit the establishment of urban colleges and universities, urban agriculture, office and urban agriculture, retail, artisan beverage, and artisan workshop uses in the RA 4.8, RC, RAH, RAH 3.2, C1R, C1, MUVS, C1O, CO 1.0, CO 1.5, CO 2.5, CO, COA, CO Roslin, CO Crystal City, C2, CTH, C3, CR, CPFBC, CPNFBC, CM, M1, and M2 districts, to amend or establish use standards specifically adding the aforementioned uses to retail service and commercial use categories and commercial mixed use standards, and removing artisan beverage and artisan workshop uses from industrial use standards, and removing certain agricultural uses from other use standards, and to incorporate references to all aforementioned uses into the AXO's retail, service, and commercial use categories, commercial slash, slash, mixed use district principal use table, industrial M districts principal use table, and the Columbia Pike, Columbia Form Base Code districts principal use table, and to allow animal boarding use in the RA 4.8, RC, RAH, RAH 3.2, C1R, C1, MUVS, C1O, CO 1.0, CO 1.5, CO 2.5, CO, COA, CO Roslin, CO Crystal City, C2, CTH, C3, and CR districts, and to incorporate references to the animal boarding use into the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Commercial Mixed Use C Districts Principal Use Table, and to make other minor editorial changes to improve clarity and for other reasons required by public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice. And we have a staff presentation from Jill Hunger and Mark McCauley.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
It's like poetry, isn't it?
Yeah.
I'll be giving the primary presentation tonight. Jill Hunger is also joining virtually as well, from CPHD, as well as Elizabeth King and Val Weiner, who are part of my group at AED. My name is Mark McCauley from Arlington Economic Development, the Real Estate Development Group, but in this role, I am co-leader with Jill Hunger of the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative by the county manager, so this is another installment of that initiative, a continued application. This is an example of us using what we call a quick process to look at uses that we think are relatively low-hanging fruit. In this case, all the most, nearly all the uses, except for one, have been already gone through a process on Columbia Pike, the ground floor use study in November 2020, culminating in November 2021, and we advertised this on October 15th, 2022. So again, is the slide, slide up? I guess, can you see the slides?
I am sharing my screen. I'm not certain if you're able to see this yet.
Now we can.
There we go.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next slide, Jill. Again, the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative, I won't belabor this point, because we've presented this to this body before, last year when we initiated it, is really about zoning ordinance reflecting the rapidly changing economic environment with uses that either are not in the ordinance or need to be amended to more easily meet the market. Clearly, this is a reaction to really strong headwinds in our commercial market, markets, particularly in our office vacancy, and so these are efforts to try to provide regulatory relief to fill that vacant space. The first use under consideration is what we're calling urban colleges and universities. This is really what we'd call a cleanup item. Colleges and universities are already allowed in office buildings, but they're allowed via use permit because, only via use permit, and often require a site plan amendment. However, they have tended to be one of our strongest sources of demand in office buildings at a time when we aren't seeing much demand. And so the new definition of urban colleges and universities merely allows us to place this clearly in the office use section of the use table, so that it does not require a use permit and does not require a site plan amendment. The distinction between the existing definition that remains in the ordinance for colleges and universities is these are uses not in a campus-like setting. They're several floors of an office building, but not a significant campus, those would still go through a use permit process. Animal boarding is the clearest sort of pathway from what we did in Columbia Pike. This is almost an exact, it is the exact definition that we used for Columbia Pike. This allows allowed uses such as animal care, animal vet, animal grooming, and doggy daycare, for lack of a better term, to provide animal boarding. Right now, they're restricting our commercial mixed use districts to only four dogs can stay overnight. The challenge there is obviously is strictly during the pandemic, a lot of people got animals, pets, and having these uses near where people live, instead of in industrial zones, is a strong amenity and a strong business opportunity. So you'll see the use standards are the same as in Columbia Pike. They protect the surrounding neighborhood by all activities being indoors, dogs aren't let outside, there are no dog runs, and 24-hour boarding supervision, whether that be via video or in-person. Urban agriculture, we also allowed on Columbia Pike, this was an extension of that, we expanded a little bit. We looked at a new zoning definition for agricultural use that allows it in both office and retail. We placed it in both the office and retail sales or services sections of the use table. There was a change from the supplemental report to the primary report, and it was really just technical in nature, after discussing going back and forth with the zoning administrator. We originally had two separate definitions that were almost identical, and we just decided to have one definition that was two places in the use table. This has not changed the nature of what we presented to ZOCO or in the primary PC report. And I know there's been questions about rooftop uses. Rooftop uses as agricultural uses are still allowed. Agriculture is allowed in all of our zoning districts, given state, state code requires that every zoning district require agricultural uses, called the Right to Farm Act. And all that would mean is that, all that would mean is that the, if someone wanted to use a rooftop, one, they would need to have a site plan that allowed activity on the roof, and then they could go through the use permit process to get that done. And we're, and we are, this is one of those things on a list that we may reconsider, and expand this use to rooftops, but we didn't want to rush it in without further deliberation. want to rush it in without further deliberation. And the proposed use standards for this, once again, very similar to some of the other ones. All this activity will occur indoors. All fulfillment activities will occur on-site, so we're not using the right-of-way. And if it's a ground floor use, at least ten percent of the floor area is designated for walking customers, so we're not creating dead zones on our ground floor. There must be dedicated walking customers, at least fifty spaces for at least fifteen feet for the customers to come in. And obviously, customers can conduct a transaction and/or pick up a purchase on-site. Artisan beverage, if you remember the Columbia Pike efforts, this was originally called Artisan Beverage Manufacturing. We removed manufacturing to further, further stress that these are not manufacturing uses. These are breweries, distilleries, non-alcoholic production facilities like kombucha. It'll be allowed in both commercial and retail spaces as a food establishment. And you'll see the definition. I won't read it all. And once again, the use standards, very similar. You'll see activity occurs within a closed, enclosed building, a retail requirement, and off-site distribution is allowed, which is the distinction between this and a restaurant that brews its own beer or its own alcohol. But as long as the loading occurs on-site. And artisan workshops is the final use. Once again, this was addressed on Columbia Pike as well. These are what we typically call maker spaces. So they're spaces that people can come in and use machinery or equipment as part of an entrepreneurial or startup effort. Same thing with artisan beverage activities will occur on-site. The retail requirements, loading, off-site distribution is allowed as long as loading occurs on-site. So in terms of engagement, the engagement met the standards that we set forth for the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative. We had an online portal. We received no public comments. We had a December thirteen, twenty twenty-two zoning committee meeting of the planning commission. We're obviously here tonight with the planning commission and will be on the county board agenda on January twenty-first. Other information that we have links to include other zoning, the zoning studies in the Commercial Market Resiliency webpage, which has all this information and all the portals. And then finally, I know there's been, oh, it goes to the screen. Finally, I know there's been questions about, this is an engagement strategy. I know it's a different process than we've done in the past. And clearly, the idea of an early R T A, doing the analysis and having an online portal to collect information over that period, often in a constrained timeframe, is not, is not, is not what we do for typical zoning studies. But these are what we've identified as the quick and nimble ones. The more nuanced ones that we get into will have a more robust engagement that have greater impact on the surrounding community. But I meant, but, but, but in terms of the online portal, it's important to note that these are publicly noticed and sent out to the master county list. It gets all the civic associations and the Civ Fed and, and those sort of things. So there has been obviously a significant amount of, of, of notice. And again, this is an engagement strategy that we discussed at length several times last year with the board and public and when the county manager presented. And there was certainly a consensus among the board and still among the board that we, that we know to, that this, that this strategy is important to address some real short-term needs in our community to extend some of these uses. So with that, I will leave it up to questions, or I guess we have some speakers, but thank you.
We have two public speakers, starting with John Musso, who's joining us virtually.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Musso.
Oh, good evening. Hello. I'm John Musso, the Government Affairs Manager at the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, and I am here speaking on behalf of, first of all, I just want to thank the county staff for all of their hard work on this initiative. Because I want to give a big thank you to Mark and Jill and Elizabeth and all of the others who have really been kind of involved in this initiative. And I just want to express that the chamber is strongly in favor of these zoning ordinance amendments. We think this is a great step in terms of modernizing the Arlington zoning ordinance and really kind of pushing it ahead into the twenty-first century and allowing it to kind of attract and retain these sort of new and emerging businesses in our community. We feel that the zoning ordinance is something that really needs to be reimagined for the twenty-first century. And we think that the current phases so far of the initiative have been really quite smart and nuanced in trying to do so. And I think just these sort of sectors of just animal boarding and artisan workshops and artisan beverages, I think it's just a really good step in terms of creating a ordinance that better reflects the economic and communal life in Arlington in twenty twenty-three. And I think especially just as we try to deal with the very severe issue of high commercial vacancy rates in Arlington, which I believe as of right now is twenty-one percent, which is the highest it's ever been, I think we need to be very smart and innovative with how we're going to deal with that vacancy rate. And I think this initiative is a perfect example of that. So we really hope this commission votes for this initiative. And also, I think as we move on to the more nuanced phases of the initiative, I hope that they can find similar support. So thank you very much for your time. We hope the commission votes to recommend these. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker?
Our next speaker is Scott Pedowitz, who's joining us in person.
Hi, Mr. Pedowitz.
Good evening. My name is Scott Pedowitz. I'm with the Apartment and Office Building Association. Good to see you all this evening. I'd like to associate myself with the remarks of my friend from the Chamber of Commerce. Two sort of additions, perhaps for anyone who might still be a bit misguided about the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative and the strategy behind it. One is that, you know, a use table such as, such as we have here is really only as good as the environment that exists at the time that it was created, in the sense that we can't necessarily envision things that don't exist, or that we might see things play out differently, or professions evolve over time. And I think actually, all the items here really hit that. Urban agriculture is novel. I'm always impressed when I see it. My understanding of the reason we limit dog boarding is that it was a rather dodgy line of work at the time these tables were adopted, and the standards, for good reason, have come up, and it could work. You know, I think university is another great example. I was thinking, I used to work in consultancy, and we would have whole groups of adults come into our office building in Arlington and go to, you know, a room kind of like this one and hear some lectures and have some learning. And that was by right, being it was in a site plan, but it was, you know, allowed because we were a business. But you slap university on that, and suddenly it's a use permit idea. So, you know, we want to make sure we're evolving. We want to make sure we're flexible to do that. And that gets to my second point. And Mr. Musso drove this point, that our office vacancy rate, our commercial vacancy rate generally is above twenty-one. I think we're pushing twenty-two percent now. It is not unique to Arlington. It is around our region. But it also means that we have to be ready to jump on opportunities as they come in. And I think that our staff have done a good job of putting together a process, as Mr. McCauley described, that allows for community impact, make sure that we're not, you know, doing something that might be, you know, challenging, but that allows us to go and jump on opportunities. Because if every sort of new or novel or slightly different idea that comes in is going to be a year-long process with uncertainty, that business is going to go to Fairfax or Loudon or, dare I say, the district or Maryland. So I do encourage you to recommend the county manager's recommendation and hope we can get some of this commercial space filled. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, does that conclude public comment?
No more public speakers.
Okay, fantastic. So matters with the commission. Any questions, comments, discussion? Commissioner Peterson, do you want to go first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Commissioner's on your chair's report.
No, oh, good. So yeah, this came before the Z O Co. Committee in December thirteenth, and there was a few of us there. And staff did a great job at responding and addressing some of the questions and comments that were brought up at that meeting. And I think other than that, not much else to report. Thank you.
Any particular areas that you would like for us to sound for discussion?
There was, so just to pick up where we left off at the last meeting, it was the notion of community outreach. I think Commissioner Schroll had some concerns about that. And then I forget what the other issues were. We had some issues about rooftop, which we've discussed.
Yes, and one that was in the Z O Co. memo, but we removed was there was a discussion of parking standards for urban agriculture. And we've decided to deal with parking for these new uses as a separate item in a few months because parking does have broader impacts. And we didn't want to just sort of guess at a number. We wanted to really study what sort of what parking demand was for these types of uses before we put them in ordinance.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Schroll?
I just had two questions. And these are questions that I asked when a similar project was being done for Columbia Pike. The dog boarding, you had mentioned there's going to be twenty-four, seven supervision, but then you mentioned that could be done by video. So what options would neighbors have if they found that the dogs were barking all night and they felt like a noise ordinance was being violated? Is that, would they file a noise complaint? What steps would be taken? Would they require, could they require that in-person supervision being, be done of the dogs? I feel like if there's a human there, I mean, the dogs will probably still bark all night, but like maybe less so than if they're just totally by themselves and somebody's watching from a video. So that was my first question.
Yeah. And the reason why I mentioned video is that some of these facilities, and usually the video is someone in the facility, but not in the back with the, with the dogs. The market standards, this is one of those where we can certainly consider going up to, you know, leading up to the board votes on more, more standards. But the market standard is when people leave their dogs in facilities, they expect some of them to be taken care of. And in case of emergency, almost always, all these facilities have someone even very nearby, or, you know, the front desk versus the back room, or even in the back room. One of the more interesting causes, some of them have the people sleeping with the dogs at night. So it's, 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 yeah, we can clarify that because usually when people reference video, it's someone sitting at the front desk, just not directly in the room. And so those complaints could be directed to the, to the facility itself.
And if neighbors did feel like there was too much barking, at that point, the business is already there and too bad? Or what could they do?
Certainly, this doesn't, this doesn't replace the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance would still go into effect if you had a use, any use, whether it's humans or pets. One of our biggest complaints, one of our biggest drivers of noise complaints are dogs barking in neighborhoods. I also think that in some of our denser commercial mixed-use neighborhoods, the buildings are built pretty sturdy. And also, the landlords have often a strong incentive to, since a lot of, a lot of them have residential above them, to not have noises that bleed into their own buildings. So certainly, I think there'd be measures that could be taken, particularly for the noise ordinance, if someone was, was a, was a chronic abuser of that.
Okay. And then on a similar line of questioning, just about the artisan workshops, this does include food services. And so if somebody was a baker and wanted to have their delivery trucks coming at four o'clock in the morning so they can, you know, source or send all of their, their products to the various hotels, you know, how, what sort of policies might there be related to four A M. truck deliveries?
So this does not include that. We do have, we had a November R T A that, that is going to address shared and commercial kitchens. We're likely not coming back in February because we have a little more work to do on that. So we may re-advertise it. But that will address the shared commercial ghost kitchen spectrum. And those, it really is a spectrum. Shared commercial kitchens can behave much differently than, say, a ghost kitchen, which is, and we would certainly, and that's why we're taking a little more time, we need to address what those standards are. Also, we are looking at in the future, sometime this year, introducing what we call artisan food, which is where someone, kind of like artisan beverage, someone's making their own salsa, things like that, which is different than maybe a shared commercial kitchen. So we're looking to really help not make the ordinance more complicated, but help really distinguish between the uses when they have different impacts.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work you're doing to support our business community and including small business owners.
Commissioner Schroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McCauley, I want to thank you and Ms. Hunger for, you know, your work on this. I, my questions tonight are not from a place of lack of support for what you're doing. It's to try to kind of understand how, how you're doing this work and, you know, how you're engaging folks. So I was unfortunately not able to make the meeting in December, which was, you know, scheduled during our workday. Wanted to know, you mentioned that you did do some outreach to people, you know, electronically. Who's on that list? You know, are, are you, is it every civic association? What was sent out? Can you start there?
I may let Jill and maybe even Matt answer that question, but it's our, it's our standard C page list, C P H D list when we have public notice of land use and zoning changes. So we, it does include.
This question came up previously. We did ask Erica Moore, who is C P H D's Communication Manager, to take a look at who is on that distribution list and coordinated this also with Nick Rogers. And in fact, for the Z O Co. meetings and these meetings, they've made certain that all of the civic associations are on the distribution list, including also several emails for Civ Fed members as well. So we did cross-reference that to ensure that we were getting the message out to all civic associations as, as well as members from Civ Fed and other interested parties that have signed up over the years to these various listservs.
Yeah. So that's helpful. Thank you both. Part of me is, still finds it slightly disingenuous to say that you didn't have much interaction when the kind of key time to have done that was a Z O Co. meeting that was at three o'clock on a weekday. So that, if you're going to continue to have these kind of expedited processes, that should not be repeated. I know that was trying to move this along. We were trying to, you know, there was some scheduling issues. I know the backstory, but, you know, I think that's something to be avoided. Would also recommend that the civic associations, particularly along our major corridors, we see lots of development, are highly engaged, participate regularly, and, you know, would probably welcome the opportunity to weigh in on some of these things. What you've suggested thus far is probably not super controversial, but you might get to, you might get there. And, and, you know, Commissioner Peterson's mention of parking and things that you're going to get to, I think, you know, warrant that on the outreach side. Question for you, Mr. McCauley, on the artisan beverage. Could you talk through who you engaged as you were determining their appropriate size for that? You know, what, what breweries, distilleries did you talk to outside the county? Who'd you engage?
Yeah. And a lot of this was an extension from the significant work we did for Columbia Pike. We spent a fair amount of time talking to Fairfax, who now has a lot of experience with this, and asked the question. We obviously have one brewery in, in Arlington, which is about eleven thousand square feet. We also thought it was appropriate that the twenty thousand square feet kind of fits within a typical floor plate of a building, but doesn't, doesn't overwhelm the building. And the consensus was that the twenty thousand square feet was a good limit. Obviously, the limiting of the space is about so you don't get into larger-scale production that has much greater impacts. So it's a bit of a Goldilocks paradox of not wanting to make it too small where someone says, I can't have a good tasting room and a brewery, and I'm constrained, but also limiting in size so that it doesn't become, have a greater impact with deliveries and in and out and those sort of things. So I can tell you that this is one of those where we're going to keep an eye on it. If we start getting, we start seeing negative impacts, we'll, we'll address it then. If we start seeing businesses that are twenty-two thousand square feet, we'll probably come back and, and try to, try to accommodate that.
Yeah, that's helpful. In doing some research after, you know, seeing the draft, a lot of breweries are kind of recommended to have about five hundred to a thousand square feet per barrel. And most small breweries start around ten barrels. And so if you're going to try to increase your size, you're like, by the math, you're likely limited in that, right? That you'd get up to about twenty barrels, and then you would sort of top out. So if that, I think we just want to go in with eyes wide open that that's what we're doing, right? That, you know, we are kind of limiting the potential growth of microbreweries in the county. If that's what we're trying to do, and they're supposed to remain small, then okay. But, you know, that's But, you know, that's, we just want to make sure that we allow them to grow into the space and things like that and can actually get a footprint. And oftentimes, that's the challenge. So-
Yeah, and just one, one more thing. I think that's exactly the point. I think it is intentional that we, the first round of a quick study like this, we wanted to make sure we're really, we were really thinking more of the food establishment, that brews its own, whatever, alcohol or non-alcoholic, is serving to his customers. You can get a growler, you can get, but not someone that is pulling an 18-wheeler up and loading it up for delivery, right? It's more of a cargo van. And if we see opportunities for more, we may think, but that also may be more or less, more appropriate in some districts than others, right? If we have larger scale facilities, they may have negative impacts that do not fit in all of our commercial mixed-use districts, so we look at that.
So is it fair to say that you're going to come back with the parking loading requirements for these later? Or are they going to fall under existing parking and loading?
This would fall under existing retail parking standards throughout the ordinance, including, you know, proximate to metro. But if we had a larger use, if we wanted to look at a larger use, I think we'd have to obviously look at those impacts.
Something to consider is that brewing facilities, breweries, end up with lots of spent grain at the end, that they have to get rid of. And they often go, you know, if they're good about it, they go to farms and other things and they're kind of reused in that fashion. But, you know, that's hundreds of pounds of spent grain that they're getting rid of every day. And so, and if it's a farm coming to pick it up, it's probably picking it up at weird hours of the day. So I want these to succeed. I do. But I also don't want neighbors coming to say, what the heck, right? So let's be intentional about this, I think. And they get lots of deliveries, hundreds of pounds of bags of malt, hops, et cetera, right? So we, you know, just want to make sure that we're communicating the right things to the surrounding neighbors, but we're also allowing these facilities to succeed. So thank you, Mr. McCauley and Ms. Hunger, and I'll yield back.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hughes?
First of all, I want to associate myself with nearly every single word that came out of Commissioner Scholl's mouth this evening. That was fantastic, Commissioner Scholl. I want to first say, so that I can later be brief when we call the motion, I tend to abstain from the item. I don't tend to oppose, nor do I plan to support the action this evening. I understand the need, the 20% vacancy rate specifically referenced this evening, the need, that impact it has on the tax base and, and, you know, necessity being the mother of all invention. However, again, just through the example of what Commissioner Scholl used within one particular industry within our complex use table our public speaker so kindly brought to our attention. You know, we really do need to, as a county, stop trying to follow or fast-follow and really try to lead the nation. And the way I think we can do that best is by recognizing the challenges of a use table in general with respect to a community comprised nearly exclusively of people. There is no place in the entire county where your actions do not impact another person. I've thought of Jenny Dean Park, as I enjoyed it the other day with my children, and the incessant barking that was continual and constant, and thought to myself, those poor general neighbors across the street definitely are enduring the constant barking of those dogs. But again, it's next to an industrial zoned particular area, so that was part of the signed-up plan. This action, how we approach it, how it happens, we need to begin to address externalities in an objective function, define exactly what it is we are telling people. Is it the loading? Is it the obnoxiousness of if you bring industrial grain products, if you're bringing in industrial loads of any type, if you need an 18-wheeler to make your operation work? What is it that is an externality to the operational thing that we want to have? Because we cannot be nimble enough to know that ChatGPT is going to need a, an AI engine sitting somewhere, you know, nearby and the form for the servers have to move closer to you to actually work. We can't be that nimble in a use table function. So we need to start defining externalities, and I hope that, you know, in the years to come, you all will, instead of following, fast-following the standards that are out there by the industry that's really smart, is leading, leading, taking the jump of faith that says, these are the externalities that we don't want to have occurring, whatever they may be, as Commissioner Peterson listed some of them. And then work on that. Find a new approach that works within the laws of the Commonwealth. We can do that. And then within the realm of the laws of the zoning ordinance. But this evening, I am not supportive of it. I'm not opposed to it. I understand its need. But, you know, as I've just said, this, and I think Commissioner Scholl gave a great example, there's, there's some, there's some unknown here and I get leaps of faith, but we could do a better job of leading and finding what it is we really want to say, which is externalities of these type and natures are things we want to oppose. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Weir has his hand raised. Okay, Commissioner Weir, thank you.
Thank you. I mostly want to agree with Commissioner Hughes with, with a caveat, though, that I think is really important. And I think that it's, you know, it's critical to think about externalities, but it's also critical to remember that we're talking about a use table within the zoning ordinance. And, you know, we talked about land use and we talked about zoning on the planning commission. So I think it's really easy for us to think that, for us to overemphasize the importance of the zoning ordinance, right? But when it comes to things like noxious uses, you know, as, as staff pointed out, there is a noise ordinance, right? There are, there are other parts of the code that cabin and, and that are the right place to cabin a lot of these externalities that we might be worried about. What we're focused on is what have permitted uses? And I know that, you know, people are going to say, well, you know, zoning does exist to deal with that, but we, we shouldn't be, I don't think we should be in the business of, of what's permitted and what's not permitted if, if our interpretation of that is that, if our understanding of that is that the zoning ordinance is where we solve and prevent all of the evils of society. So I, you know, Commissioner Hughes, your points will take, and but also I hope we don't take that too far, right? Because it's not the place to, to, to prevent all of the harms or, or deal with the externalities. That's all.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Commissioner, Manager?
Thank you. I would like to associate myself with Commissioner Weir's comments. I think that, you know, having one living, breathing document that is intended to constrain all aspects of how we interact with society is not really how that works. And I appreciate that the zoning ordinance is going to be able to do some things, but not everything. I do also think that as we've heard, you know, what the commercial vacancy rate is, we do need to be thinking creatively. And I am appreciative that, that the county came forth with a, with a streamlined approach to at least some of these smaller modifications to the zoning ordinance so that we can start fast-tracking some things. I certainly think that community feedback and involvement is essential and is really one of the cornerstones of the Arlington Way and how we comport ourselves within this community. I, I do think that, you know, that said, it's never fun to be bogged down in bureaucracy either. So when there is opportunity to move more quickly on certain things where, and, you know, that limited, in a limited field, I think it's appropriate to do so. And I am appreciative that we seem to be able to find a few of those instances here. Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. I had one final follow-up question about just possible impact on residents in the neighborhood. I know we have noise ordinances to possibly, you know, look at trucks driving in and out or barking dogs. What about, are there any smell ordinances? I understand that breweries can sometimes have like a very, very strong smell, and if all of the neighbors found it offensive, or if there was an apartment building and people were like, we're not going to rent there, it stinks. Is there an ordinance related to that or just like, you can stink as much as you want to stink and that's the way it is? Thank you.
We often call it the McDonald's problem, right? Some people like to smell french fries, some people don't. But I'll, I'll let, I'll let Jill, who's more of an expert on that, talk about some of the, some of the issues and often the difficulty to enforce about what's a noxious smell, certainly noxious chemicals, certain things that harm you. But Jill, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I, I don't. And I think this is an issue that, that comes up with a variety of things. Mark, as you pointed out, with McDonald's, I think we've, we've heard it with some of our rotisserie chicken places, we've heard it with some of our barbecue places. It's just a, it's very challenging to address and address smells.
I will just add that the use standards do, that's why having all the activities occur inside isn't important, where you have filtration systems. No one's going to be putting their, their stuff under a tent outside and brewing out there where the smells could obviously spread faster. It doesn't mean smells go where they want, but often buildings can control that within the HVAC system within the building.
Commissioner Hughes?
Just, Steph, just to, I, I want to make sure our community has clear expectations. And so as a reminder, this is applicable to both existing use structures and, and new build structures. So anything from the fabulous clients, you know, JBGs of the world, or is any of those guys who have the most advanced HEPA filter systems, all the way up and down to the gas station that Pupatella operates, it hasn't been improved in 70 years, you know? This is everywhere. So it's important to remember that. And, and they're beyond the standards in the zoning ordinance or in the code as Commissioner Weir lays out. There are no standards that would require an operator of a brewery on a gas station lot to improve the HVAC system to ensure that it doesn't smell for the next quarter of a mile. That's just the reality of this. So I understand where staff's at with this, I understand where the county board's at with this, I understand where our business community's at with it. I feel it. As I said, we should look forward, try to lead. We need to lead on this issue because we are, I don't know, does New York, I don't know, probably New York does it by a use table. If they do, we should figure out something better than that. We've got to figure out a way to say, everywhere in Arlington, you impact a person's life on a 24/7 basis. What are the externalities we all can agree to as a community that we will not do? And I just really want to say that, and I agree with Commissioner Weir, the zoning ordinance doesn't solve all ills, but criminal statute doesn't either.
Any additional discussion? Okay, wonderful. Let's go to a vote. Oh, let's go to the motion. Commissioner Sarley?
Yes, before we can vote, we have to know what we're voting on. This is a very interesting conversation. It's sort of like Louis Mumford's History of the Cities, where the whole zoning thing came from, where you're trying to separate, you know, all the different uses. So always fun at this planning commission. Before I do the motion, I'd like to thank staff for doing a great work and supplying us with all this great information and responses. I will now then read the motion, and I'll try to do as poetic a job as we previously heard. All right. Let's see. So I have to say that the planning commission, I move that the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the attached ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance, Articles 7, 8, 11, 12, and 18, Sections 3 and 4 of Appendix A, Columbia Pike Special Revitalization District Form-Based Code, and Part 9 of Appendix B, Columbia Pike Neighborhood Special Revitalization District Form-Based Code of the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance to generally define and permit the establishment of urban colleges and universities, urban agriculture, artisan beverage, and artisan workshop uses in the RA 4.8, R-C, RA-H, RA-H-3.2, C-1-R, C-1, MU-VS, C-1-O, C-0-1.0, C-0-1.5, C-0-2.5, C-0, C-0-A, C-0 Roslin, C-0 Crystal City, C-2, C-TH, C-3, C-RR, CP-FBC, CPN-FBC, CM, C-1, and M-2 districts to amend or establish use standards, specifically adding the aforementioned uses to retail, service, and commercial use categories and commercial mixed use standards, and removing artisan beverage and artisan workshop uses from industrial use standards, and removing certain agricultural uses from other use standards, and to incorporate references to all aforementioned uses and to the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Retail, Service, and Commercial Use Categories, Commercial Mixed Use, C District Principal Use Table, Industrial, M Districts Principal Use Table, and the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code District Principal Use Table, and to allow animal boarding use in the RA 4.8, RC, RA-H, RA-H-3.2, C-1-R, C-1, MU-VS, C-1-O, CO-1.0, C-0-1.5, C-0-2.5, C-0, C-0-A, C-0 Roslin, CO Crystal City, C-2, C-TH, C-3, and C-RR districts, and to incorporate references to the animal boarding use into the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance as Commercial Mixed Use, C District Principal Use Table, and to make other minor editorial changes to improve clarity and to, and for other reasons required by public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Hughes?
Madam Clerk, would you mind putting that back up on the screen for me for a moment? Just want to make sure that we get clarity. So Commissioner Sarley, I believe between CM and M2, you missed M1 there in the districts. So with my, I'm going to seek unanimous consent to reinsert it for the good government side of me. So the, just to add clarity, I seek unanimous consent to modify the motion to ensure that M1 is designated between CM and M2 districts.
Any objection? Okay, seeing no objection, let's move back to the motion as amended to include M1. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I neglected to say that I was going to abstain from the motion as well, and I, I can see the good reasons for doing this. And like I said at the outset, my, my reticence is not because of the necessarily most of what you're doing on the zoning side. It's more on the outreach. But as we were kind of doing that kind of colloquy, there are some things that I feel like maybe aren't fully thought through. And so I do have a little reticence that we're kind of pursuing some of these without fully understanding what use standards we need to put in place.
Any further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Hughes?
Abstain.
Scholl?
Abstain.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion carries six to zero. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item. Thank you very much.
The next item is PC Committee, Planning Commission Committee Reports and Other Business, including the approval of the December 5th, 12th, 15th, 2022 meeting minutes, a staff report on current matters, and some organizational matters of the commission for 2023.
Thank you. At this point, may I just seek unanimous, oop, may I seek unanimous consent for the approval of the December 5th, 12th, and 15th, 2022 meeting minutes? Any objection? Seeing no objection, they are approved. Staff report, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Good evening, members of the planning commission. For the record, my name is Matt Pfeiffer of the planning division. There was one thing I did want to mention regarding staffing. Our own Olivia Sontag in current planning has accepted a position in the comprehensive planning section, so she will be leaving us and becoming the new Columbia Pike Coordinator to replace Evri Demas. So we're sad to see her go, but we're happy for her as well, and we will be in the hunt for a new associate planner. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Commissioner Peterson, do we have some rosters?
Yes. Well, so I sent you all an email a couple of days ago with my SPRC report, just the top line. We have 17 projects that are either active, preliminary, and anticipated near. 11 of them are active, so thank you to everybody who is able to chair a project now or in the near future. We have Commissioner Bagley, who has recently agreed to chair Red Lion Inn, Best Western, and- and Commissioner Sarley, who has agreed to take on Sunrise, South Glebe, and the Innet Roslin. So thank you for that. And in a minute, I will go over the ARVA roster to get your approval on that. But I just wanted to say thank you all very much for your very hard work in 2022 on all the projects that we had going on. We had five that we kind of got through the whole process, but many more that were starting up, ongoing, paused, starting again, paused projects. So I moved people to different projects, so I appreciate flexibility when, when that happens. So thank you to everybody. So we have one roster to be amended tonight. Received an updated version of that earlier today. So colleagues, or Madam Chair, I would like to ask for your unanimous consent in approving the roster for the ARVA SPRC project.
Any objection? Seeing no objection, the roster is approved. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you. Fantastic, thank you. Commissioner Schroll, LPRC, LRPC?
Sure, so can stand in for Commissioner, and tell me. So there's a LRPC on the Sunrise Special Glove Study, which will be held on the 18th of this month. And then there will also be another LRPC on, I guess it's the, make sure I pull this up, the other Special Glove Study, 2500 Wilson, which will be held on the 31st of this month. And I have amended rosters for those as well.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead with those?
So yes, I'd like to ask unanimous consent to adopt an amended roster for the 2000 North Glebe Road Sunrise Special Glove Study to amend the previously adopted roster.
Any objection? No objection, the roster is adopted.
And Madam Chair, I have one for 2500. Yeah, great.
Yes, please.
I would like to ask unanimous consent to adopt the roster for the Special Glove Study for 2500 Wilson Boulevard.
Any objection? Without objection, the roster is approved.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sarley, anything on Zoko?
Yes, I'm just blanking out on another topic that we have coming up on January 17th. I know that we are going to continue the market resiliency study, and Mark left, but he could probably give us a quick update on what is coming up. But it's essentially continuation of what we discussed tonight. And then there's another item which I'm blanking out about, but the next meeting is on the 17th, and it will be at a regular evening time. Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. Much appreciated.
Commissioner Steinberger, PFRC?
No update at this time. Next steps with the Career Center will be coming back in the new year, which we're now in. So when I have timing for those meetings, I will provide that.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes, Aug?
Next action we hear in the coming months will be the Bank of America site.
Thank you. Okay, so organizational matters for the commission for 2023. We have the 2022 annual report. I'm going to seek unanimous consent to defer this matter to the February Planning Commission meeting. Any objection? Seeing none, we'll defer this matter to February. Adoption of the Planning Commission hearing schedule for 2023. We've actually completed the planning schedule with the exception of July. So think, can I entice any of the people here today to sign up, at least as an interim for July until we get some new members?
Yeah, probably for July, there you go. Entice them.
Madam Chair, you can always leave it empty.
Yeah. Okay, so unanimous consent to approve this Planning Commission hearing schedule for 2023. Or excuse me, I'm sorry, the PC representative assignments for 2023 county board meetings. Any objection? Yeah, both of them, I guess, yeah. Any objection? Fantastic, that's approved. We, I'm going to seek unanimous consent for deferral of the committee liaison assignments for 2023, so some of our colleagues who are missing here today can also look at that. Any objection? Fantastic, that will be deferred to February. And so lastly, we have our PC bylaws amendment. Mr. Pfeiffer, are you going to be presenting on that?
Sure. Emma, would you mind bringing up the latest language? I believe that I
Yes.
Sent it by email.
Give me one second.
Can you talk through it?
Yep.
Essentially, the, the purpose of this amendment, and there was a memo that was distributed by Mr. Fusarelli, I believe, earlier this week, on this topic. The purpose of this amendment is to allow a little bit of additional flexibility on alternates for rosters for SPRC and LRPC subgroups. And so what the additional language does is it allows a chair of a stakeholder organization, which is on an adopted roster, to provide an additional alternate that is not on the named roster in writing to the, to the subgroup chair. And as an additional amendment, I just want to go over, I think most of you have seen this language this week at the very least, an additional amendment that came out of our discussion in closed session with the county attorney's office on Monday evening, is we have eliminated the language that talked about this new alternate not being, not counting towards the quorum. We've eliminated that language, eliminated that language, and added in that these alternates can count toward the quorum as long as they are a representative of a county board or manager-appointed commissioner committee. But the county attorney's office was not comfortable in going there for, for civic association representatives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any public speakers on this matter? Thank you. Now, the matters with the commission, any questions or comments? Commissioner Hughes?
Just going to move the item unless my colleagues have any.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to say, I want to thank staff for the diligent work that you've done in the past few weeks on this. You know, we, we knew there was going to be something that was going to go wrong at some point, and it did. And that's okay. And I do appreciate the kind of getting to, getting to yes on this, that I think this is very workable, and I do appreciate it. So thank you. To you, the county attorney, Mr. Fusarelli.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes?
Madam Clerk, would you please place up on the board the latest bylaws sent by, and the date for me, please?
Could you say that one more time? Could we put the language back up?
Could you put the language right back up, the full language?
Is this the one? Thank you.
The full language, if you don't mind, what we need to actually add it in, I guess.
That's it?
January 2. Article, it's, it's article, number 10, Article, scroll up, ma'am? Thank you. It will be Article 10, keep going, Article 5. Okay. I move that the planning commission amend Article 5, Section 10 of its committee bylaws adopted September, scroll up, Madam Clerk. September 2022, making the attached changes. Please present them for a second.
Keep going down.
Striking, whenever an alternate is identified in this manner, their attendance shall not count towards meeting the quorum, and replacing it with whenever an alternate from a county board or county manager-appointed commission or committee is identified in this manner, they may count towards meeting quorum.
Yeah. I have to say the whole language. Yes.
Let me.
How many's your motion?
Let it fill.
Is there a second? Okay, your motion fills.
I move that the planning commission amend Article 5,
Giraffe 10.
Section 10, to read, "For any committee subgroup created by the commission, the commission shall approve or adopt the roster of that subgroup at a monthly commission meeting prior to the first meeting of that subgroup. If the representative and alternate, if applicable, for a stakeholder group on an adopted roster are unable to attend an LRPC or SPRC subgroup meeting, the chair or president of the respective organization may designate in writing to the subgroup chair an additional alternate from the same organization with the same powers and authority as a representative or alternate on an adopted roster. Whenever an alternate from a county board or manager-appointed commission or committee is identified in this manner, they may count towards meeting quorum."
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll take the roll. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Aye.
Patel, aye. The, the motion carries eight to zero. Final motion of the night. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Steinberger.
Good evening. This is with regards to the Planning Commission policy with regards to speaker signups. And I did actually send out draft language to all of you for this, which I am now slightly amending per some feedback that was received. Do you have what I emailed? Yeah, pull that up, and we can just edit that live time. It's a small change. Instead of at least 24 hours ahead of the notice meeting, it should be by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. That will bring us in line with what I believe is county board policy. And it makes sense, I think, to be consistent with our county board colleagues. So that is that one edit, and of course, we're open to discussion on that. So the, meeting in order to, yes, that would be nice. Thank you. Editing by collective team, I like it. So the motion as, do you want me to read my motion and then speak to it? Okay. I move that all persons interested in speaking on an agenda topic. The bylaw amendment, so I don't have to say the "I move" piece? Okay. I move that the planning commission bylaws be amended to state that all persons interested in speaking on an agenda topic at a planning commission hearing must sign up by 5:00 PM on the day of the noticed meeting in order to be guaranteed an opportunity to speak at the requested date and time. I think we need to change either, I think we need, instead of saying meeting, it should say
Second.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so there's this, it's okay. There's a second on this motion now, the matters for discussion at this point. Commissioner Steinberger, go ahead.
Motion to, you seek unanimous consent to change where it says notice meeting to noticed hearing? So we say hearing in both places, opposed to one being hearing, one being meeting? Okay, great, thank you.
Any objection to?
Sorry, that one.
Any objection? Okay, hearing, no objection. Now, anybody want to speak on the, on the, on the language that's presently before us? Commissioner Schroll?
I think Commissioner.
Commissioner Schroll, just go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So are we amending Article 4 of the bylaws? Is that the intention?
I believe so. Could we share the screen to?
Commissioner Weir has his hand up while I pull that up.
Sorry, thank you.
It is, it is Article 4 meetings.
I believe it would be in addition to that.
Yeah, so it'd be number 10 under Article 4?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Weir?
Just to note that I will, I, I support this. I'll, I'll be introducing an additional motion on the topic of speaker policies after we're, we're done with this.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I just have a question. Does the chair have any prerogative to override this if we had a very slow night and an adorable 12-year-old came in, wanted to speak on behalf of their favorite restaurant being moved or something like that?
And we've had that happen before.
I want to say, if we can, Emma, the language again, one more time. I do say that the language does say shall, in order to be guaranteed an opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much. So it's
Thank you.
Thank you.
My parents will be proud.
Any other discussion on this motion? I have a question. Is anybody concerned that 5:00 PM is too late?
I would like speak on that.
Okay.
There's a reason for that. Originally, it said 24 hours ahead. I think that would be more practical in terms of our ability to plan an agenda and understand the scope of, you know, determining timing for speakers and all of that. Certainly, that would be a more helpful deadline. The feedback that I received from some members of the commission is that, given the county board policy of 5:00 PM, it makes sense to be in line with their policy. So I, I do find that to be a persuasive argument, although a 5:00 PM cutoff same day is not as helpful from a planning perspective for this particular commission of planning.
For this volunteer commission?
Commissioner Weir has his hand raised again.
Commissioner Weir?
Yeah, it's, it's my fault. I'm the one that suggested to Commissioner Steinberger that we go with 5:00 PM, and the reason that I did that is only because that is our current cutoff time for people who wish to speak remotely.
So I have concerns about a 5:00 PM cutoff time. I don't think that that really gets us anywhere from where we are presently, and it doesn't really provide us any planning, and we are a, we are not paid. We all come from jobs, and most of us at 5:00 PM, if we are following the logic around Zoko meetings and the three, and the brouhaha that ensued on the dais about a 3:00 PM meeting, the same continues for a 5:00 PM cutoff because at 5:00 PM, there will be no additional conversation about how we're going to schedule. So I, I'm concerned about a 5:00 PM cutoff. I would probably, if we are not comfortable with 24 hours, I would move that timeline up to three. Commissioner Hughes, and then, yeah.
Commissioner Patel, going down the path of us not being paid, which is an admiration in the Commonwealth, too, which is interesting to be brought up this evening. I just will, just, I want to just give us historical, historical perspective, and as a reminder, we, I just sort of sometimes ground us in the, in the broader Commonwealth code. Prior, our prior policy to COVID and the introduction of the hybrid policy was that a speaker slip was provided, and that anybody at any point in time was capable of showing up up until the moment that the good clerk called the item and being heard. So we're walking ourselves back a lot by going to 5:00 PM day of, and I understand the planning prospects, and nobody enjoys sitting through 92 individual public speakers, especially when required to return 10% of zero salary. However, it is within the broader confines of the, of the Commonwealth that our public code does this. So I do support the 5:00 PM. I can get to 3:00 PM, it doesn't matter. But as we pull that number back, we have to remember the original premise of, of the requirement in the state code. It's required throughout the Commonwealth that we are to hear a public hearing to hear what the public has to say on a given matter, whether it's nice or not, whether we listen or not, it's irrelevant. That is the, the point of the public hearing. So I just, I understand the chair's desire, but the, the past precedent is that you can come day of having nothing, and as long as the clerk hasn't called the item, if your speaker slip is in, you're heard.
No, and, and I appreciate that, that comment. I mean, we, COVID changed things. It changed our practices. It changed, it changed the county board's practices. And I, and I, I mean, they're changing their practices now. And so, you know, we're, we're at a place where we need to do, I think, what is necessary and appropriate for us. There, there's one thing to say that we're going to amend these things, and we want to make sure that we have public comment, we have public hearing. Of course, we do. We want to make sure as everybody who wants to be heard is heard. But also not doing what is necessary to ensure that is another problem, right? And so when we think about 5:00 PM, that could be the difference for the chair having to further abbreviate time to make sure that those people that came in, even if we said 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, let's say we've got 20 new people that come in 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. We, we can't plan. We can't add We can't add new days to the hearing schedule. We can't we will miss the mark. And that's what concerns me because I don't want us to get to a place where we say, now that we've got these 20 new people, everybody's time is limited as of right now, and nobody was expecting it. I think the language here also gives the chair discretion to say, okay, there were two new people that signed up between 3:00 and 5:00. No harm, no foul, we'll add them in, right? But it's really in that case where we're talking about 100 speakers came in from 3:00 to 5:00. We can't manage that. Commissioner Hughes?
Actually, I'm sympathetic to that. And I'd actually encourage you know, when we began, when I began my time with the commission, Commissioner Scholl and I, we weren't on video. We were on audio. After, the big change was to Hello? To put us on video and to introduce that part as the county managers broadening us out. And now we accept virtual comment, which has benefits and, you know, costs. All of us have spent, you know, I'm sure in the eight years I've been here, at least probably 1,000 hours of my volunteer time, sitting through meetings in person, or now, in some cases, virtual, discussing matters with my neighbors across the county, hearing diverse and broad viewpoints. So Madam Chair, I'd actually, and I wonder with my colleagues, my Commissioner Steinberger, I would be comfortable with requiring 24-hour advanced hours notice for virtual speaking and to allow in-person speaking up until 3:00 p.m. or 5:00 p.m. on the day of to encourage our neighbors to remember, when you look someone in the eye right there at the podium and tell them something, it means one thing. And it's also important, you know, it's a very it means that you were willing to sit here through all of this boringness till 8:52 on a January night to have the process done. So perhaps my colleagues support maybe having bifurcation in our meetings now that we allow virtual public comment?
So I I will say that I believe the 5:00 p.m. cutoff is the current policy. Maybe Emma can confirm for okay, for online comments? I think there's something bottom line is, I think we need to amend the bylaws to cover this in some regard. I don't feel that I will support a motion if there's bifurcation, if it's 5:00 p.m. versus 3:00 p.m. I can live with either of those options. The bifurcation, while I think, yes, speaking virtually versus speaking in person, there is a practical difference. I get to a point where I feel a little less comfortable about treating virtual folks versus in-person folks differently. So I struggle a little bit with that. If the sense of this body is that other folks don't have that struggle, though I'm sensing that some people do, then fine. But I do think that the more we start to differentiate between people participating virtually versus in person, we do a disservice to this commission. And we are harming our efforts to be more inclusive, you know, across multiple platforms to the experience participating in this process. And I'm concerned by that. I will also say that from the perspective of how many days of Planning Commission meetings that we have as a body, none of these deadlines do anything for us. These all have to be noticed, you know, well in advance. So we're not actually, you know, last month, when we had, you know, multiple nights of meetings and we were trying to figure out, you know, how many actual meetings, nights we were going to need. There was maybe going to be even a fourth night. You know, none of these deadlines would have helped us figure that out. Now, the number of minutes a speaker is going to have, yes, it would be nice, I suppose, not just for us, but for the speakers, to know in advance how many minutes they're going to have. So I see some benefit to that. I don't see a practical real difference between 3:00 p.m. versus 5:00 p.m. I don't actually see it doing anything for us. So if the county board says 5:00 p.m., I see some benefit to us being consistent to the county board.
So I will say, just from planning purposes for last time, it does make a difference. Because when we are watching this real time, we last time, what we did is we had Ms. Martin give us regular updates by 10 speakers. So every time we notched the number up by 10, we got an email from Ms. Martin saying, now we're up by 10, right? And that lag that happened between 30 speakers and 50 speakers to when we got to 92, I mean, it was right, but I mean, there was this lull in this false sense of security when Commissioner Weir had said, like, I don't think we're going to need to go into another we're not going to be going into another night, or we're not going to be able have to hold this other meeting. Then all of a sudden, it happened, right? And so, you know, right now, I think we've learned our lessons from the last time. We know we're adding these days. One of the things that makes one of the things that makes me a little bit nervous is not giving people upfront a good understanding for how much time they are really allowed to have to speak. And that's the struggle we had the last time when we had this process. Because we didn't know up until that final moment whether people were going to have one minute, two minutes, three minutes, or some other timeframe. And I don't think that that's fair. Because when people want to be heard, they really want to be heard. And so between 3:00 o'clock and 5:00 o'clock is when those conversations really can take place. Because the last time when we noticed this stuff, we said, this is going to be public comment. Second meeting is likely going to could include carryover of public comment, commission business. That's how we planned it. And that's how we'll plan it again, presuming missing middle comes back in March or any other topics that we believe are going to garner a lot of commentary. So I worry about 5:00 because most chairs for this commission leave their offices at 5:00 in order to come to this commission to be ensured that they are here by 7:00 if they have any chance of even going to their home and maybe grabbing a bite to eat. And maybe that doesn't even happen. I know for some of us, it doesn't happen. So it makes a big difference between 3:00 and 5:00 so that you can give people really good information about what they can come to expect at that meeting. And then that you don't they feel heard and they feel valued. And that is part of our responsibility, too. Commissioner Scholl?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of thoughts and reactions to what folks have said. So I wouldn't support a bifurcation. I think it gets complicated. I think people forget. So I think we I would recommend choosing one time, whatever we decide. I'm kind of agnostic on 3:00 or 5:00. You know, if the so I don't know if 3:00 is easier for folks to go with that. It gives staff more time, it gives chair more time. I don't necessarily feel too strongly that we have to follow what the county board's doing. I don't that's not persuasive to me that much. The other thing I might just toss out here is that most of our nights as planning commissioners go like this. And, you know, yes, last month, there were lots of public commenters because you're considering one of the biggest things that we've heard in, I don't know, 10 years. And so but, you know, we don't design parking lots for the day after Thanksgiving, right? Or you're not supposed to, anyway. So I don't know if we always need to design our process for, you know, missing middle. Like, I think we can try and to Commissioner Steinberger's point, you and Commissioner Madam Chair, you and former Chair Weir had to consider well in advance how we were going to deal with that. You know, and yes, the day of, I'm sure that made things more hectic. But you couldn't notice days the day of. So I don't think that really changes a lot of what you're concerned about. I think it it does run the margins and it does make it easier on the margins. But so I'm happy to support motions for 3:00 or 5:00 or whatever, or 24 hours in advance, if that's helpful. But those are that's kind of where I am.
Yeah. Before I call on Commissioner Peterson, I would just say, I would have recommended 24 hours in advance because I think that makes more sense. And it really does give people time to finesse and massage whatever it is that they want to say, right? I mean, a lot of people we see come in when they do come in here, they're reading from something. They're not just speaking off the cuff. Even when they're on virtually, they're reading something, right? And so that was the conversation we had with a lot of people the last time that we were, you know, look, there was concerns from organizations, people, you know, who felt very strongly one way or another. I don't know how much time I'm going to get, right? And that's not fair. So I actually would have gone with a 24-hour rule. Again, I don't disagree. I mean, I don't think that there's going to be a stampede at the end of the day between 24 hours and the day of. It's going to be it's going to be nominal number, and we can address it at that point. You know, the people who came in and didn't comply with the 24-hour rule, we can say, okay, you've got a couple of minutes, or you whatever it is, we can that's always discretionary. But I do think it's fair to the public to have this, that certainty. And quite frankly, it's also fair to us. I mean, it is fair to us, right? And we need to be able to create processes that work for all of us on the PC side and on the community side. Commissioner Peterson?
Just to say, Commissioner Weir has his hand raised after. I just wanted to say, I did not support having a different deadline for virtual people and in-person people. And it's I mean, I hear you that it's really nice to have people show up in person. But I'll also say that while most of us have tried with varying degrees of success to move on from COVID, a lot of people don't have that luxury. And my neighbors still wear gloves and full getups and sometimes like hospital scrubs because she's like 90 years old and she doesn't want to die. And so I wouldn't want to prevent her or penalize her from being able to speak to us while the rest of us are trying to move on from this pandemic.
Commissioner Weir and then Bagley?
Just to note that the motion that I referred to earlier, which, Madam Clerk, I sent to you an email just to call your attention to it, if you haven't seen it, is will also address some of this insofar as it will set speaker times based on the number of speakers. So that's just there is something coming on the specific issue of people knowing how much time they have to speak. That's all.
Would you like me to share that motion on the screen now?
Well, no, we have a motion on the floor. I really just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. I'll take advantage of having the floor to mention it.
Okay. Commissioner Bagley?
Yeah. Procedurally, so what happened the last time when it exploded to 90? Who told people who some sit down and time themselves based on three minutes because they thought they were going to, and all of a sudden, they were told when they got here? I mean, were they told in who called 90 people? You called 90 people?
Yeah, I mean, we were very fortunate to have Ms. Martin be really on top of it. But that, it was entirely unfair.
Yeah, because, I mean, if I've practiced for a week for this because it's so important.
Yeah.
So we actually had to issue a statement saying that time limits would be announced at the meeting because we had an overwhelming number of questions. Almost every person was wondering what their time limit would be. And another thing I wanted to point out is for those virtual speakers who sign up, we do have to send confirmation information. So it's another step we have to go through for the virtual speakers where I think that the time difference counts a little bit, just for your consideration.
Yeah, and we saw it specifically with a number of speakers that were very concerned about how much time, rightfully so, right? How much time they were going to get.
Yeah, how can you plan?
Well, you can't, right? Especially if we are dedicated ourselves to a certain number of days. Go ahead, Commissioner Steinberger. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
So does 24 hours does 24 hours make it better for everybody?
Commissioner Weir has his hand raised again, I believe.
Yeah. I will say
Nope, nope, I don't. Well, I did, but not anymore.
I would say that when we were going through this process the last time, Commissioner Bagley, we had indicated that we would put a 24-hour limit up front because it was just really unmanageable. And so we said that going forward in preparation for larger items that are yielding a lot of public comment, it does a disservice to the public to not have that certainty up front and for planning purposes. So that we had we had tossed out that 24-hour number as being just more manageable to give people time to prepare themselves for what they wanted to say.
So staff-wise, that would give you more time to do what you need to do to keep it fair and informative for people who want to be engaged.
The more time, the better on staff's part.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Can we put my motion back on the screen? If I'm inclined to make a motion by unanimous consent again to change the 5:00 p.m. to 24 back to 24 hours. Apologies to Commissioner Weir. 24 The difference to me between 3:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m., I think, makes us look silly. And 24 hours is an actual amount of time. And there was a reason for it. It had been previously discussed. I think that that is a rational decision. I think 3:00 p.m. versus 5:00 p.m., I think our commission has better things to debate than a two-hour difference. So by unanimous consent and again, I will reiterate that this is only to be guaranteed an opportunity Chair has discretion to do anything else. So I would seek unanimous consent to revise this to 24 hours from 5:00 p.m.
Any objection? Saying none.
Commissioner Weir does have his hand raised and he's on video.
Do you have an objection, Commissioner Weir? You need to unmute.
Sorry, I don't know if I have an objection or not. And maybe I should say that I have
Commissioner Hughes is saying that you're not you either have an objection
I do object. And but it might be short-lived objection. I think that I'd like to see some language in there. Since we're talking about the bylaws, that the guaranteed is right. But I think a lot of people aren't going to see that guaranteed and realize how much work that that word is doing in the bylaws. And so I, you know, I would like to see something saying that, you know, speakers who are signed up later will be accommodated to the extent practicable and subject to the discretion of the chair. But, you know, I'm also happy to have us think about that and then revisit it a month from now so that we can actually move forward. And now I sort of talk myself out of objecting. So Commissioner Steinberger, maybe you should seek unanimous consent again and I'll shut up. But
Okay.
You know, Madam Chair, I think that we should plan to hammer out the details about the discretion of the chair at our next meeting.
Okay. Ms. Martin, can you just put it up on the screen, please? Thank you.
Okay. I seek unanimous consent to revise the 5:00 p.m. cutoff to 24 hours.
Any objection? Okay, are we ready for a vote on this? This has been the most controversial item on the agenda for this evening.
Not my intention. I do have a question, and Ms. Martin raised this, and I asked the group. I don't feel that there's a need to clarify that this applies to all in-person and virtual speakers. But is there an interest in this panel to adding language that says this shall apply to virtual and in-person speakers?
No. Yes, please. 24 hours
Commissioner Sarley, could you say that again with your mic on, please?
Sorry, I was just asking if 24 hours is that the time of the meeting starts?
On the day before the notice hearing. Yeah, so must sign up 24 hours within the before, wait. Must sign up 24 hours in advance of the notice hearing.
So we need to add "in advance"? Okay.
So motion to I seek unanimous consent to amend this motion to strike the day before the notice hearing, to sign up 24 hours in advance of the noticed hearing. Any objection? Okay, can we vote? Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, can we, are we ready to vote on the motion as amended? Fantastic. Commissioner Bagley? Aye. Steinberger?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Eight to zero, the motion carries. Commissioner Weir, you have some language about speaker times.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Clerk, are you, are you able to, to put the language on the screen?
Can you see that?
I can't, but if my colleagues can, I have it on a different document that I can read it from. So no one's telling me that they can't see it, so I'm just going to read it off of my email. I move that the Planning Commission adopt the following policy. Individuals may elect to speak in their individual capacity or as representative of civic or community organizations representing the interests of Arlington residents, e.g., civic associations, building tenants, ad hoc coalitions, county advisory commissions, et cetera. Individuals will be allowed to speak for a maximum of three minutes, and organizational representatives for up to five minutes. Limitations may be placed on the amount of speaking time given to all speakers when lengthy public testimony is anticipated. For example, when there are 40 speakers or more for one agenda item, the speaking time will be two minutes for individual speakers and three minutes for organizations. Any such limitations will be announced by the Chair before public testimony begins.
I have, I, yeah, is there a second on this?
Second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay. I have a question. Is there, would there be any objection to tabling this motion to the next meeting? And I will say that because based on the conversation that we had in our closed-door session on Monday, I think that we were already moving away from the three-minute and five-minute time, timelines, and in favor of shorter. I think there was a proposal to make it two and three minutes, respectively. So I, I, I hesitate to move on this particular motion, and I think that there's a lot of edits I think I would want to make to this language. And I don't feel comfortable starting this conversation at 9:10, given what we know about our quorum concerns for this evening. So it would, would, Commissioner Weir, would you feel comfortable if we took this up in
I, I would be comfortable with it. You know, there, there is a, I would be comfortable with it, with, with a motion to, to, to table until the February meeting, yes. Because that, that keeps it on the agenda.
That's fantastic. And I, and I will note that we don't have a lot for February, anyway. So this would, it gives us some time to be able to, if, you know, to the extent that we're looking at it and people are revising it and considering what their thoughts are, there's time to discuss it in February.
So for my colleagues, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll circulate to the, to the Commission so that everyone has the text in order to noodle on it between now and then.
If you take, go ahead, Scholl.
Are we, how do we dispose, or how are we dealing with this motion? Are we tabling it?
Yeah, you're, you've got to move to table.
May I? Okay, so I will move to table this motion to the February Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Vote. Bagley?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries eight to zero. Any further business, Ms. Martin?
You did the 2023 Planning Commission meeting schedule, right? Then we're done.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, staff, applicants, members of the public for your time, because there were no applicants, members of the public for your time, consideration and patience this evening. The items heard this evening are expected to go to the County Board on January 21, and I will be representing the PC at that meeting. Many staff labored to make this virtual meeting run smoothly. Thank you to all of you. The Commission is adjourned. Thank you all.